Welcome to our first town hall of the school year. The 2022, 2023, 2024 school year. So thanks for coming tonight. I know it's a gorgeous night out there. So everybody's sitting around the fire pit, we figure. I don't know. A very special thanks to Core Electric Cooperative and to RE/MAX Alliance for their community support of tonight's town hall meeting. We appreciate them very much. And we'd also like to thank Conifer Jazzercise for providing water. So there's coffee, cookies, and water back in the bath if you're wanting to do that. Kristy is videotaping the meeting, and a link will be available in the next day or two so that you can watch it again. And people that are not here can watch it for the first time. Our speakers tonight, as I'm sure you all know, have been asked to present just the facts. They're not in support of or opposition to any development or ballot issue. And also, there will be no campaigning at all inside the school for any issue. Most of you have been here many times. If you haven't, you know that the speakers will be up here, and they will have no comments or questions during their presentation. But at about 8:00, everybody will stick around, and you can ask any questions that you would like of all the speakers. So we ask you to stick around and do that. So what is going on around here? First, I'd like to have Jessica, Public Services Manager, and Kat, the interim manager of the Conifer Library. They are here with great news about the Conifer Library.
Thank you, Shirley. Hi, everyone. It's good to see you. As Shirley said, I'm Jessica Paulson. There has been a change, though. I'm now the Assistant Director for Public Services. And this is Kat LaFever. She is now the Public Services Manager for Conifer Library. So I'll let her introduce herself.
So my name is Kat LaFever. It's kind of a weird last name. I've been in libraries for 12 years, been in Colorado for two. I've lived all over the country, and the West is home, so I'm absolutely thrilled to be back here. I've been down at the Golden Library for the last two years. I know I've been up at Evergreen and Conifer for the last few months.
All right, so to get into the big, exciting news with Conifer Library. You may have heard that JCPL has put aside some money for the Conifer Opportunity Project. This is a project where we've engaged the community, held input meetings, worked with the school and other community stakeholders. And we have decided that it is in the best interests of the community for JCPL to find a location of its own instead of being co-located in the high school. We do not have a timeline for when this is going to happen. This is a really big change. We want to be thoughtful with it. We want to work with the school as good partners. So we don't know how long the process will take for us to find a property or a standalone building or a retail space that will be appropriate for library needs while still being able to support this school as we work through this process. So we do know that it will be happening. We do have the money for it. The next steps are for us to engage a realtor to help us find property that we can use as a standalone library here in the Conifer area. So that's the big news with Conifer these days. And I'm going to let Kat tell you a little bit more about what's going on locally in the library.
So one of the changes that we've made that we're piloting right now is we are open on Fridays, which we did not used to be. So while the Evergreen Library is closed for a redesign, we've added that time slot back in. I did want to just really briefly go over some of our upcoming programs. Every Saturday, we have family time from 9:15 to 9:45. We have a teen Dungeons and Dragons hangout that's happening this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00. We have our teen activity board. Did I get that right? I always mess that up. We call it TAB, and that's how you refer to it. And that's how the teens get input into a lot of our program. We also have the Hello Teen movie, Hocus Pocus, coming up on October 4th from 4:30 to 5:30. And a Dia de los Muertos program from 3:00 to 4:00 and starting October 7th. So kind of a broad variety of programming. Kind of stepped up the programming as Evergreen is closed for the duration of the redesign. So as part of that Friday hour opening, we are going to be closed for two different days, on October 20th and November 3rd. October 20th, we're doing a staff training. And November 3rd is, I'm sure you're all aware, the big game between Evergreen and Conifer. So that's going to kind of figure take all the resources that we just need to kind of back off that. So if you are interested in further events, those are on the website. And we also have an app that I want to talk about that is MyJCPL, has all kinds of information you can browse. You can actually even check out those on that, so that's pretty cool.
All right, thanks again for being here, everyone. Kat and I are going to be hanging out afterwards. So if you have any questions, come find us. Thank you.
So how about that news, a new library? Is anybody excited? Been a long time coming. I think, what, 1954 punky that they started library up here? So finally, we're getting our own library. That's great. Okay. Next, we have Beth Schneider, Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce. And she's here for a brief save the date of everything chamber.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. We, as you know, had a really wonderful elevation celebration in the end of July. And we look forward to that next year. You can really mark your calendar early and put that down for the last Saturday and Sunday of July for 2024. But our next events are going to be, the Festival of Trees is returning, which we haven't had since before COVID in 2019. And we're very excited to have that at the Evergreen Memorial Bar, the Barn Evergreen at the Memorial Park. That will be on November the 17th and 18th. So we hope you all come out and celebrate the kickoff of the season. The Christmas Parade will be, as it always is, there on Sutton Road with the parade as well as the marketplace. And that's going to be on December 2nd. So please mark your calendar. And if you're interested in coming to any of the Chamber meetings, we do have our membership meeting, the second Thursday of every month. And our after-hours mixers are the third Thursday of every month. So just reach out to me if you're interested in participating, and I can get you registered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, next, CDOT is not here tonight, and neither is RTD. But both of them sent a little preview of what they're doing and a little update. Marilyn Salzman, board member, is going to give those updates. Marilyn.
So RTD sent a lengthy report that I am not going to share. I'm going to give you the highlights. And we will send it out to our email list. So if you're interested in RTD, make sure you are on the Conifer Area Council email list. They are going to hold some public meetings for proposed January 2024 service changes. There'll be virtual and in-person meeting options available next week. And again, look at their website if you're interested. I did look at the Conifer bus transportation, and they said it was just going to be some minor adjustments to the hours. So it won't be a big issue for Conifer. Another program they're starting is Zero Fair for Youth. RTD's Zero Fair for Youth pilot program is focused on welcoming a future generation of customers to public transit and affect a positive shift in riding habits. So beginning September 1st, RTD is providing free access at no cost to individuals under 19. The one-year pilot runs through August 31st, 2024.
I can hear you.
This is my teacher voice.
RTD is also wrapping up its two-month Zero Fair for Better Air initiative on August 31st. And they had a lot of success with that program. The state funded program expanded by one month this year, provided access to, free access to all RTD services during July and August. And as I said, they have a lengthy additional report, and we will send it out to our email list. The CDOT update. CDOT is still working on the design of the proposed Kings Valley Interchange, which will grade-separate the intersection of 285 and Kings Valley Drive to address safety and operational concerns. The interchange will carry mainline US 285 over Kings Valley Drive, which will remain at grade at its existing elevation. If you look at CO.gov under Projects and look under 285, Kings Valley, you'll see it. They hope to have the initial design milestone 30% done in August, but because of the wet summer, they weren't able to finish all the geotechnical field investigation. So now they think the design will be done by November. The cost estimate is also being refined. Right now, the estimate is $15 million to $55 million. The project is not yet funded construction, but it is on the CDOT's 10-year plan, which is the must-do priority projects. And you can also find more information on the CDOT website, CO.gov, and you can find their master plan. And they say they will be here in November to update us further. So thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. I think we have this fixed now. Every time I ask them to make sure it's got fresh batteries and it's going to work, and every time this happens, so I apologize. So next, we have our core director, Ron Kilgore. He's going to update us on happenings at Core Electric Cooperative. Ron.
Thank you, Shirley. Well, things are exciting at Core Electric these days. A lot of things going on. There are two things I'd like to chat with you about tonight. I've spoken about both of these things before, but they're imminent now. We are in litigation against XL for operation of the power plant that we own 25% of. That litigation is actually going to trial, it looks like, unless the heavens part and they make an offer. As of right now, there have been no offers. So we're scheduled to start trial on October 3rd, I believe. So that's going to take four weeks. That is over the, this is a photo of the power plant. It is down outside of Pueblo. We've owned it since about 2010. So obviously, there's a difference in opinion on how it's been operated. We don't think it's been operated very well, and we think they should pay for that. So that's going on. And at stake is over $200 million. So this is not just a small thing. To give you some reference, that we just approved, or we're about to approve the next year's budget. That's about $350 million. So this is a significant amount of money to Core. It's almost, you know, it's a, and whatever comes in, because we're a co-op, if it comes into Core, a good chunk of that will come back to our members, which is probably just about everybody in here. The next big thing, in fact, we broke ground this morning. We had an opportunity to break ground on the new Conifer office, the district office. Right now, it's located by Elk Creek Elementary, and this is a photograph of it. It has served us well since the 1970s. And as the area has changed since the 1970s, the needs of the area have also changed. So we are, we broke ground on a new facility. So Core doesn't just build buildings because we like to build buildings. It's not about that. It's about serving the members. So the new office will give us more warehouse. It will give us heated parking for the line trucks, the big trucks that are, that work on the power poles, a lot more outside storage, and a great place for the public to come. It'll be a public face for Core. You can drop by and pay your bills if anybody still writes checks. You're welcome to drop by there and pay your power bill. So the new office is on a field that's right now vacant. And it's just past Pine Junction. And we'll give you a kind of a bird's eye view. So that's the, if you see, there's Pine Junction and just a little bit past there. Probably the best landmark is it's just past Independent Propane, if you know where that is. So there's Independent Propane. This is Wancrest Park, which, this photograph is taken from 285. And this is going down Wancrest, and this is the first field to the left. So that's the field where the new Core Office. So this is what it's going to look like. I'll tell you, we were there today. We turned over shovels of dirt, and 10 minutes later, the bulldozers were moving dirt. So we are actively moving dirt on the site. I think they said 40,000 cubic yards of dirt have to be moved to make way. This is what it will look like. So the big, big difference that you will see as part of this is, right now, because we're limited on size and what we can store, if there's a snowstorm and they need equipment, transformers, parts, poles, sometimes those parts have to come from Sedalia, where the main warehouse is. Or the lineman comes in and it's time to brush the snow off the truck, and it takes him 30 minutes to brush the snow before you can turn your power back on. So with heated parking for the trucks and a lot more warehousing, it will minimize outages, especially during storms. So I think this is going to be a great opportunity for the community. And the other, the other thing that's going to be at this site is a new substation. We're doing some upgrades. So this will minimize outages. It will make a more welcoming place for employees, and I think it will benefit the community. We also have an old building for sale, if anybody's interested. Maybe we can put a library there. So we should be done in about a year. So thank you very much. We're hoping we can be in the new building probably by the end of 2024. So thanks a lot. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Well, next, we have Sheriff Reggie Marinelli. And she is going to give a little bit of update on all the changes that have been happening at the sheriff's department. Reggie.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, for being here. You guys always are a great crowd. And my absence here the last few months, I have like two, three meetings on Wednesday nights, and so I have to spread it around. So I apologize for that. I want to go through some things before the time runs out. We are working traffic as much as we can on 285. It's never going to be enough. I get that. We hear you. We hear you loud and clear. So we've had our motorcycles up there working it. Our deputies are working it as much as they can. And along with the other issues we have throughout the county with traffic. So we are up here. I realized yesterday was a big news day for Conifer because of the road rage situation where somebody was shot. Thank God it was not a fatal situation. When those guns come out, not only can people be shot, but when it's on the roadway, you never know what's going to happen with the cars. So we are aware of that. We are diligently working that. I can't give any more details than that. We do have some information that hopefully will lead to an arrest in that case. So more to come on that. I'm going to start with all the bad news. Flying J, we caught the guy. That was a good thing. And so a couple of things on that. We used some, what I like to call, good old-fashioned police work on that one. We tried the technology route, which gave us persons of interest. The person that was arrested was, in fact, one of our persons of interest. However, the way he was committing the crime, which I can't go into, we had to put boots on the ground. We had a lot of undercovers working that operation. And I am very pleased that we caught the gentleman. Now, the bad news is, we had a copycat down at Stapleton Park. He only has been out once. That's been reported to us. And so what I want to do is make sure that you guys, as citizens, always keep on your toes, be cautious, don't let your guard down. We have no control over these people. And there are a lot of crazy people out there acting out right now. Why somebody would want to do a copycat of attacking women in a park, I do not understand. We have a little bit of information on that case, and if we can catch a second person, we will. He's only struck once, which is a true copycat. We don't know why people do what they do. We can make assumptions and speculations. But please, just stay diligent as to your surroundings and be safe. And obviously, don't go out after dark on one of the parks, things like that. So just think twice, use common sense, and you guys will be safe out there. We put some safeguards into all the parks, and we will work them as much as we can and try to get our staffing up to the point where we have more people out there. Couple of good things for the department. We just received a national award with our Special Investigations Unit. And that was all 50 states. And we took the number-one Special Investigations Unit across the entire country. Most of that was based on human trafficking deployment that we did last year. And we did the same deployment this year. And we caught one more this year than we did last year. I'm not saying there's a huge human trafficking issue in Jefferson County. But what I am saying is that we do our homework before we go out and target these people and take down those that are doing human trafficking. There's one that came through today that I approved that's going to be hit in the media probably tomorrow. And so it's good to get these people off the street. We also have a detention deputy that won a local, state, and national award. It's one of our female deputies who is a young deputy, but is very diligent on making sure that she can get the drugs out of our jail, which helps us for people, especially the fentanyl that comes through our detention facility. And so this deputy was put in for this award, and again, went local, state, and national award for her. And so we're very proud of our staff with that. Real quick, somebody was mentioning to me when I walked in about the new vehicles. I hope you guys like the looks of the new vehicles. But I want to explain why we went to a new branding. When the undersheriff and I took office in January, we were adamant that we would not rebrand because it costs too much money. Everything we have done since January, when we start to make a decisions, any decision, one of the top things we look at is the financial aspect of it. In December, right before taking office, they called me. We got three years' worth of vehicles delivered, which was 34 vehicles, brand-new vehicles, that we should have gotten during COVID, but we didn't. So 34 vehicles, and they called me and they said, "Do you want to send these out to get painted?" And I said, "What do you mean, get painted?" And they said, "Well, we have to paint the doors white in order to do our decals on them." And they said, "Also, those 34 cars, it's going to cost you $67,000 to paint those doors white." So the undersheriff and I talked, and we looked at each other, and I said, "I guess we're going to rebrand because it saved us $67,000." So that is the reason we repainted, did not paint, the patrol cars and put the new decals on because it saved us so much money. Also, in the long run, when we go to sell them, when they're afterlife, we're going to get more money for them because they're not two-toned. So we're going to, we saved money in the beginning. We're going to save money in the end on those vehicles. So that is the main, that is the only reason we decided to change the branding on those vehicles. So again, everything we're doing has to do with the bottom line, the financial aspect. So I hope you guys can appreciate that. I hope you like the new cars. They turned out pretty good. We let the troops decide what the striping was going to look like, since they're the ones who have to drive them. So I'll stick around for a little while if anybody has any further questions for me. Again, we are working diligently on upping our emergency management for fire and floods. And that will be ongoing my entire tenure in this office is to make sure that we are prepared, mitigate, take care of. And hopefully, we won't have an incident. But I know it's a matter of time before one probably does hit, whether it be a fire or a flood. But we will be ready for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. Okay, next, just a minute, but Dave Clark, David Clark with the U.S. Representative, it's Pedersen, right? Pedersen's office. He's just going to make a brief introduction.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Like she said, my name is David Clark, and I'm with Representative Brittany Pedersen's office. She's the Congresswoman for Conifer in the 7th Congressional District. Just wanted to reach out and say if you have any issues with a federal agency, if you're not getting your social security checks, if maybe there's an IRS refund that's taking too long, veterans benefits, if you or anyone you know are having an issue like that with a federal agency, you can always reach out to our office for help with that. If you just Google Brittany Pedersen and go to our website, we'd be happy to help. Also, just quickly, wanted to say we're also working at the federal level on issues like wildfire mitigation. Recently, the Congresswoman has put legislation forward to increase the tax credit that homeowners can use for home gardening, wildfire mitigation. And also, has been working to cut red tape so that homeowners don't have to file 1099s for larger amounts of money when using it for wildfire mitigation. Anyways, happy to talk more afterwards. I promise that I keep it short and sweet. But thank you for having us.
So be sure and talk to him if you have any questions like that. So next, we have County Commissioner Leslie Dahl-Kember with a scoop on what's happening at Jefferson County.
Lots of good scoops to share. Hi, everyone. I'm Jefferson County Commissioner Leslie Dahl-Kember, and I serve on Board of County Commissioners alongside Andy Kerr and Tracy Kraftthar. I'm very proud to represent Conifer on the Board of County Commissioners. I want to take a moment and just give a special shout out to our Sheriff Reggie Marinelli. She has been an extraordinary partner on issues like reducing wildfire risk, and we're so grateful for her leadership. Also, Board of County Commissioners, every year, because of statute, take a tour of the jail. And we were with the sheriff's team just yesterday to look at the jail. And there were some major takeaways. You know, about 1,000 inmates are housed in the jail. Deputies ensure they're in a secure, safe setting. Behavioral health veterans and special housing units help to accommodate 75% of inmates who are struggling with mental health issues, substance use disorders, and other challenges. And those challenges have grown exponentially. In fact, when the sheriff and her team came to the Board of County Commissioners during our budget talks, they talked about some of the trends that they're seeing. In fact, there's a medical center that is housed in the jail, which we took a tour of. And it was originally built to accommodate only 400 inmates. Of course, as I mentioned earlier, the jail can accommodate up to 1,300 inmates with an average of 1,000. However, that medical center is seeing more severe diseases, ranging from diabetes that requires dialysis, which also requires transport with a deputy. So we learned a lot. We also learned that the minimum-security inmates, of course, are in a dormitory-style housing. They participate in activities that are designed to teach them skills to be more successful when they return to the community. So again, really want to thank Sheriff Marinelli and her team for the tour that we took and the incredible work that they're doing. I also want to give a shout out to you, our community, especially to those of you who applied for a Jefferson County Board or Commission. We have 30 of them, ranging from issues related to wildfire risk, economic development, open space, libraries, and much more. And I see a number of familiar faces in the room who applied for boards and commissions. Continuing our great news about the libraries, we had some very competitive, strong candidates. But we fought really hard to ensure that Conifer has a representative on the library board. And I'm really proud to announce that we have advanced. We had two, thanks to both of our applicants for the library board. The Board of County Commissioners is slated to vote next Tuesday on the Conifer resident who has been advanced. But we're so grateful to everyone who applied for a board or commission. And then I also wanted to share with you a little bit more about Tabor refund checks. Jefferson County property taxpayers will soon receive a Tabor refund check in the mail. In 2022, Jefferson County received about $39.4 million in revenue. That was over our Tabor limit. In other counties, they reinvest those dollars over the Tabor limit back into essential county services like road, bridge, wildfire. county services like road, bridge, wildfire, risk reduction, and more. In Jefferson County, we return those refunds to you in the form of a check. Just to give you an idea, all property owners, I'm sorry, all property owners, including homeowners and business owners, will receive an equitable share of the 39.4 million refund. The average check will be about $185, and 95% of property taxpayers will receive a check for 250 or less. The median check amount is $110, which means about 50% of people will receive a check in that amount. Also, a shout out to our clerk and recorder, Amanda Gonzalez. Some of you may have participated over the last couple of months in our effort to redraw the maps, which we do every several years, of the Commissioner districts. We had a number of you come online, share your own version of what you thought the map should look like. We need to make sure population is equitable among all three districts. There weren't major changes, but we took your advice and counsel into consideration. Probably the biggest change is that Evergreen is now completely in District 3. Of course, Conifer has always been in District 3, and then there were some other slight boundary changes as well, but thanks to everyone who participated in that process. I'm looking for Angela. Are we okay with one more?
You always are, darling.
Wow, thank you. Made my night. One other quick thing I wanted to share with you is just a quick update on roads. Real quick, I asked our road and bridge team, I said, "What have we got going on that I can share at the Conifer Town Hall tonight?" And they mentioned that Highway 73 from Kitty Drive to Barclay Road is an area of focus. The county will be overlaying and adding shoulders from US 285 to Grayboose Trail Road. That work is going to happen in the coming months. The county is looking at a preliminary design of a roundabout to be installed at 73 and Barclay intersection and other potential improvements. Pleasant Park Road east of US 285, overlaying a section along 285 across approximately 6.5 miles from there, and work will happen next year, or possibly in 2025. That depends on staffing and budget. Also, South Foxton Road east of US 285 will be doing some overlay work there to Reynolds Park, about eight miles or so, and that work will happen in 2024. Again, as they reminded me, depending on budgeting and staffing. So those are all the updates from the county. If you ever need to reach out to me, my cell phone number is 303-638-3433. You can call me or text me directly, or if you want to talk to the Board of County Commissioners, you can email us at commish@jeffco.us. Thanks so much, everyone. It's great to be here with you tonight.
Thank you, Leslie, as always. Okay, next, we're going to have Conifer Area Development Updates and also What's New with Short-Term Rental Regulations by Heather Guthervis, Planning and Zoning Long Range Planner.
Thank you. Thank you for having me back tonight. Tonight, we will be going through what's going on in the development world with planning and zoning, going to be talking about some development cases that I know are of interest, and then also a couple of big projects that the county is working on right now. So first, I want to talk about the development cases. There are 29 development cases right now in various stages through the application process with planning and zoning in the Conifer 285 corridor area plan. The ones that I want to talk to you about, there are four new pre-applications, there is one new community meeting that actually happened tonight, right before this meeting, two new subdivision plats, and then one new site development plan, and I'll go through what those processes are as well. So with the pre-application, this is a very preliminary process where somebody can come into the county and say, "I'm thinking about doing this thing. How do I go through the process? What processes do I need to go through?" We get some very preliminary information, called preliminary application, and we refer it out to some internal agencies to get ideas, to give the applicant ideas about what kind of issues may come up during the processes and what processes they would need to go through. This is a process that doesn't have community engagement involved with it because it is so preliminary. About 40 to 50% of these cases never move forward to a formal application. So we do have four new pre-applications. They are not very complex, so I put three of them on one screen, and the first one is a property in Pine Grove area. It is an existing building that sells food for people to take off premises. They want to serve food on premises, so that is the first case. There's also a property near North Turkey Creek and Stonegate Drive that wants to subdivide 40 acres into two lots, and then a property on Richmond Hill Road that wants to legalize a building that was built without proper permits, and it was not meeting setbacks. They tried our variance process, were denied, so their next step is trying the rezoning The pre-application that I wanted to highlight is the one that had the community meeting tonight, and this is for the Mountain Resource Center off of Kitty Drive. They are applying for rezoning to allow drop-off licensed preschool on-site, and the plan recommends neighborhood commercial in this area, and some of you, who knows, maybe went to the virtual community meeting at 5:30 this evening. Next, I want to talk about rezoning and a special use case. So the rezoning process is a process where somebody wants to change the allowed uses on their property. Let's say they want to go from residential to commercial, they need to go through the rezoning process. Our special use process, we have a list of certain uses in our regulations that can be kind of added on to your existing zoning if you go through the special use process. This is a public process that has four key points for community engagement. The first is at the community meeting, which occurs prior to the formal application, so that the applicant can take that community input and revise their application to address some community concerns. After a formal application is made, there's a formal referral period where there's not a meeting, but you are welcome to submit comments about anything that you might see in the application. And then there are two hearings, one before the Planning Commission, and then one before the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners makes final decisions on both rezoning and special use cases. So the first rezoning case that I wanted to talk about is a case that probably doesn't show up on the development list anymore, or at least it didn't show up when I saw it, is the Conifer Center, the proposal for the 188 residential units behind the Safeway. The applicant did not respond to the case manager's request for them to make a resubmital, and so the case manager voided the case out. If the process did want to move forward in the future, a full new formal application would need to be submitted. Then another case I know is of high interest is the Shadow Mountain Bike Park, and this is the case for a special use to allow the day-use lift-served bike park as a commercial recreational facility up off of Shadow Mountain Drive. Currently, this case is in the first referral process. It went through, it was reviewed by a variety of agencies. The case manager compiled all those comments, gave them to the applicant, and the applicant is responding to those comments. They received the comments in June. They have 180 days to respond, so it does give them that time, they are in that window, they have been corresponding with the case manager, so I wanted to let you know that is potentially still ongoing. Next, we have a few subdivision plats that I wanted to talk about. Subdivision plat is a process where the uses are already in place, so it's already zoned for maybe, let's say, a residential use. The minimum lot sizes are established, and now the property owner needs to create those lot lines to actually be able to sell off the lots that are created. These processes are also public processes that go to two public hearings, one before the Planning Commission and one before the Board of County Commissioners. So this case is in the Kings Valley area off of El Pico Drive, and it is a subdivision plat for two single-family detached lots. The process went from the first referral to the second referral since the last meeting in April. There are also two new subdivision applications. I kind of hesitate to say applications. They have made their sufficiency reviews submitted, so we're checking the information. It looks like they probably need to do some revisions before making it a formal application where it's fit to go out on a referral to a variety of agencies. These are two different three-lot subdivisions. One is on Baird Road, and the other is North Turkey Creek. The last case that I wanted to talk about is a site development plan, and again, the site development plan is another type of process where the uses are already in place, and we look at things like landscaping, architecture, drainage. So there is a site development plan that is new off of Turkey Creek Road that is to permit the expansion of boarding services related to existing behavioral healthcare I also wanted to give you an update on the Together Jeffco project. When I came in April, I think we were still deciding a name for the project and got your feedback. So this is the huge county project where we are updating our comprehensive plan, our transportation mobility plan, community wildfire protection plan, creating an evacuation annex, and updating our regulations all at the same time. It's an 18- to 24-month process that is massive. It is a massive process. We just finished up kind of our kickoff and background phase. We were going out to the community, and I did want to let you know that we reached out to about 4,000 people. We have some upcoming events in October. The first is October 10th, then we have one on the 12th and one on the 16th. The 10th is to be determined. I've been working with a church and trying to get confirmation that we have that space for the 10th. That would be an evening meeting in our North Plains area. We are looking at having each of these in one of the Commissioner districts, so one in each of the Commissioner districts, that's a better way to say it. So the first one would be somewhere in our North District, District 1, and it probably is at 64th and McIntyre area. The other one, Heritage United Methodist Church, that will be in the morning to accommodate various schedules in the Littleton area, and the last one is at Betcher Mansion on Lookout Mountain, and that will be in the afternoon. We, okay, I am in time. We are, I know that Evergreen-Conifer is not on here, but that was actually strategic. This is the first of three different groups of meetings. As we get into the meat of the plan, we want to make sure that Evergreen and Conifer are on those lists, but we want to make sure that all the different communities in the county get a chance to see this process. I'm just going to say, go to TogetherJeffco.com if you want to hear notification, or if you want to get notification, or anybody that's already signed up for Notify Me will also receive notice. Last, I want to just briefly touch on short-term rentals, another process that I know is of interest in the county. We just finished up some community meetings. We're taking that information and creating a draft. We do not have a timeline for that draft right now because we're trying to correlate it with the contract with hiring a third-party vendor to do monitoring and enforcement, and we are figuring out that timing right now because it was a little bit longer than we expected. If you want more information about any of these things, come talk to me over at the table after the meeting. Thank you.
If any of you know Heather, she is so busy. She is actually in charge of the whole Together Jeffco thing, so lots going on there. And Heather, you can send stuff to us and we'll get it out to our community, okay, about all of that. So next, Senator Basie was not able to make it tonight. He's actually out of town this week, but Representative Tammy Story is here, and she will give us a legislative update.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. Really appreciate it. My name's Tammy Story. I'm the State Representative for House District 25. If you live south of I-70 in the foothills of Jeffco or in the Chatfield High School Articula area, more or less, I would be your State Representative. I'm pleased to have an opportunity to chat with you a little bit tonight. I serve in the House of Representatives, as I mentioned. I am on the Mental Health and Behavioral Health and Human Services Committee. I also serve on Ag, Water, and Natural Resources, and I'm the Chair of the Capital Development Committee, where we work on all the capital or construction needs of all our state buildings across the state. During the summer, in the interim, when we're not in session, we tend to do quite a bit of traveling across the state to go see many of the projects that are at hand that different agencies and departments will be bringing forward to us in December when we do hearings, and the committee will have the opportunity to filter through all those and work on a priority list that we then submit to the Joint Budget Committee to get funding for our highest priority projects. So we did a tour last month in northwest Colorado, just last week. We did a three-day tour in the northeast part of Colorado. We visited Colorado State University. We also went to University of Northern Colorado. We went to Morgan Community College, Northeastern Junior College. We went to two youth service centers, Prairie Vista and Platte Canyon, both detention centers for our youth, and then also spent some time at Sterling Correctional Facility. It is our largest prison in the state of Colorado. It houses 2,500 offenders, and they are in all five levels of security that we have, so they have offenders at the highest level of security at that prison, and they have a lot of capital needs as well as all of our other state institutions and our state parks, and of course, our state buildings like the Capitol. So that was a great trip, very informative. We will have another trip next month to the southeast quadrant of the state, and that agenda is in the process of being put together. Also, during the interim this summer, I'm working on policy work to get ready for next session that starts in January, and so working with lots of stakeholders and a variety of topics that include wildfire. I have been attending the Wildfire Matters Review Committee this summer, and they are getting ready to, well, they just voted, just voted yesterday to send bills into drafting, and then there will be a selection process to choose five bills to carry out of committee to go into the next session. I'm also working on one of my own to work towards greater mitigation. I did a couple of bills last year, one to increase funding for fire investigations. We have one state fire investigator for the whole state, and that role is to investigate cause and source of our fires, but because we only have one fire investigator, only about 50% of those fires are investigated and bound to have a source or a cause. So we're working to ensure that we can do that job better with more funding. And then also, I worked to ensure that there was full funding for another bill that came out of Wildfire Matters Review Committee two years ago, and the funding was cut in half. It was for the Colorado State Forest Service, for their tree nursery, and the tree nursery grows tree seedlings that are used for reforestation after our devastating fires and also for watershed stabilization. And their nursery is shades of 1950. Their equipment is really old, and the facility is really old, and so we were able to fully fund the rest of that project this summer. So they're pretty delighted with the opportunity to grow the nursery, probably to be able to provide two to three times as many seedlings as they have been because they will be able to put more efficient processes in place and have more space and more up-to-date facility that works more effectively in that regard. And I'm also going to work on a bill for protecting victims of child abuse and domestic violence, and I'm working on a pipeline safety bill, or probably a family of bills, because I requested a state audit of the pipeline safety program about two years ago. That audit came out just in the middle of June, and it was a very, very significant outcome. I would say a pretty scathing report of our whole system in Colorado, and so we have a lot of work to do to shore up that system and ensure that we are protecting our citizens as well as properties and get better systems in place in that regard. So if you have any questions, I'll be hanging around for a little bit. Please come by and visit, and you're welcome to find me online on the General Assembly website, and give me a call or send me an email. Thanks very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Tammy. So the Little White Schoolhouse is celebrating 100 years, and Carla and Erin are going to talk a little bit about them. talk a little bit about them.
Hi, everybody. My name is Erin Thatcher. I'm the President of the Conifer Historical Society Museum, and I'm here with Carla Meek, who's... will be right here. Carla is our Vice President of the Board and really a longtime community member connected with the Little White Schoolhouse. Carla, can you tell us a little bit about the Little White Schoolhouse and the history?
Of course I can. That's my favorite topic. I started there in 1983 as the preschool director for the Jefferson County Preschool Program, and I stayed there, I'm still there, but not as a teacher, but Jefferson County donated, Jefferson County Schools donated the school and the land it sits on to Conifer Historical Society. So I had to stay and make sure they took good care of the building, which they have done that, because that's what it looked like in 19... when I started in 83. This picture was in 84, and this is now. Jefferson County took good care of the building. We had thousands of schoolchildren go through there. We would have about 100 a year for 27 years that I was there. So... and then before that, the school opened in 1923 to grades one through eight, so thousands of children have gotten their education there. We're still in the business of educating people on the history of Conifer, and I'm going to let Erin talk a little bit about Conifer Historical. Where'd you go?
I was hiding. I wanted everyone to see the horrible building from 1984. So a couple ways you can be connected to the Conifer Historical Society. We're a membership organization, so if you'd like to join, it's $25 a year. I know it's expensive, but with that, you are supporting a local nonprofit and helping to contribute to our mission, which is maintaining our building as well as connecting with the local history and connection, or collecting memories of people who've lived in Conifer for a long time. For now, we are really excited to be accepting applications for board members and volunteers. If you'd like to spend a little time with people who love history, or you just want to share some stories of the olden times back up here in the 70s or the 40s, please come connect with us. We have a table right at the back. A couple of upcoming events that we do, we will be having a cemetery tour in October, right, October, where if you have never been to some of the Conifer cemeteries, now would be a great time to connect with us and go on a tour. And then lastly, we do have a 100-year time capsule idea we're kind of working on. If you have memories of Little White Schoolhouse or your kids going to school there, please come share them with us. We'd like to gather those and eventually vary a time capsule for the next 100 years. So thank you for having us. Have a great evening.
Thank you both. Very exciting. Next, we have Elk Creek Fire Chief Jacob Ware to talk about all the great, amazing projects that they've been working on and other updates for the fire departments.
Good evening, everybody. Jacob Ware, Fire Chief at Elk Creek Fire. Want to talk about a couple things. First off, based on the survey that we had here, wildfires on top of everybody's mind, so I want to kind of touch on that. Our local fire danger has been almost non-existent over this entire summer. It's been great. We've had record amounts of rainfall. Some of the Forest Service weather stations, the one on Kenosha Pass, over a seven-day period had over seven inches of rain. We've broken a lot of records, like wet as June on record, wet as blah, blah, blah. It's been wonderful for the summer. So we've still had the same amount of fires that we usually have, they just haven't gone anywhere. We usually average two, two, three fires every summer, per month, mostly lightning strikes, but with the wet vegetation, they haven't gone anywhere, posed any control problems. We also had a lot of questions about our fire danger signs. How do we get that fire danger? So I kind of wanted to touch on that. So our fire danger signs, they're all around the district, you know, low, medium, high, blah, blah, blah. The way we end up doing that is we have a fuels crew, fuels technicians. They go out to specific sites across our district, and they'll take fuel samples. So they take samples of the vegetation, bring it back to the fire station, and they weigh it, then they bake it on a low, very low temperature for about 24 hours. They go back and reweigh it, then there's a hauling chart that they can actually use to figure out how receptive that fuel is to fire. So then, we look at the NFDRS, which is the National Fire Danger Rating System. It's a nationally accepted process that the Forest Service, Parks Service, those fire departments use to determine fire danger. So that's actually how we come up with fire danger ratings. It's not arbitrary. We don't just go out and look at the weather. We actually try and use some acceptance science behind it. And when it changes, that's when you go out and have the guys change all the fire danger signs. This summer, we've had about three weeks where the fuels had hit a threshold for high. Everything else has been moderate, so it's been great for the summer. Next thing we want to touch on was our chipping program. Our chipping program has been going like gangbusters. A little backstory, it started about seven years ago with a surplus vehicle from Jefferson County Sheriff. It was a Ford F-350 with, I think, only 180,000 miles on it or something, rather, and a grant-funded chipper and a couple people. It's number one. Five years ago, I believe four years ago, we were able to purchase a surplus chip truck, which actually allowed us to remove material from the chip sites instead of broadcasting on the property. Part of another grant, part of the grant was we had to remove the biomass after the chipping, so the chip truck solved that. It was 2004 or '05. Not bad, had a few problems, tens of overheats going uphill, which is a challenge in our district due to the hill component. This year, through the efforts of Captain Yellen and Captain Mandel, we were able to get a $75,000 grant to help us offset the purchase of a new truck. You've seen the new white truck running around. It's working with the orange one, which is referred to as the Great Pumpkin. We're running them in tandem in some neighborhoods, and it's working out really well. Couple bits about the chipping program. Last year, we serviced 480 addresses for about 800 cubic yards of material. This year, last week, we were at 280 addresses for 850 yards of material. What this means is people are utilizing the chipping program. Everybody that's doing it is doing a lot more, so it's really exciting. People are taking advantage of the program. We allow people up to 15 piles per site, and we are averaging 12 and a half piles per address, which is really exciting. A lot of those piles have blue-marked trees. If anybody, has anybody participated in our wildfire prepared home assessment program? You saw the blue-marked trees that Kelly marked? We're getting a lot more of those. So now it's kind of come full circle where we have this home assessment program. We go out, we talk about fire danger, talk about forest health. Now people are starting to implement those programs and then utilizing us to help complete the circle. It's exciting. We also completed, I believe, four certifications for the wildfire prepared program, which is great. I mean, everything's working, and it's all due to the residents getting out and taking ownership of the wildfire problem. How'd it do, Angela?
You're doing great.
Oh, perfect. That's all I had. If you guys have any questions, concerns, please. Richmond Hill is the staff station up there, in Richmond Hill and 285. My door is always open at ElkCreekFire.org. We've got a lot on our wildfire website if you have any concerns about wildfire. Also, my phone number and my email's on there, JacobWare, jare@elk creek fire.org. Give me a call, stop by. Thanks a lot.
These guys were at my house last week. They filled the whole truck with our 15 piles, and they did an amazing job. It looked fantastic after they were done. And I know somebody here that's been certified, right? Yay! Okay, so last, we have Kurt, who is a CIC board member, and he's going to talk a little bit about the survey that you all hopefully completed last, I believe it was last November. He's going to be giving some highlights of the 2022 community survey that you completed and a little bit of what's happened because of it. Kurt?
I'm not very good with the mic, so if I get it wrong, you'll understand. How many took the survey? Great, great. Thank you very much for taking that survey. We got some great, great feedback. We got over 2,000 comments, and you know, we were going to spend a lot of effort responding to the things that you said and sharing that with other organizations. This is the fifth survey that we have completed since 2006, and in this presentation, I want to just hit the highlights. You can read faster than I can talk, so I'm going to fly through these and get us back on time. But if you want to know more, you can go to our website, and Kristi, who is videotaping this, took all of the data, put it in some very easy-to-see graphics for you to understand what everybody said. And the website location is down there. Again, these will be included in the video for the Town Hall. I put myself in your shoes, and I thought, what kind of questions would you ask? And this is what I'm going to present today. About 680 responses we received, less than we had in 2018. When you consider the population of southern unincorporated Jeffco, that puts us at about a 6% rate, and the folks in market research said that's still a pretty good response rate. This year, we had 50% of our survey respondents that were less than 24 years old, which is good news, and a majority of you have lived in Conifer for more than 10 years. So we asked you where you lived, and we gave you 22 locations. On this map, the red dots really form the boundary of the survey respondents, with Conifer and Pine Junction being the two village centers that have the services that support everybody in that green area. So a key finding was how you rank ordered these categories on the left-hand side, and I'm going to go to some of the charts that, or some of the graphs that Kristi put together. So I don't know if you can read this, but on the far-left side, we have wildfire risk, preservation of our small town, diminishing water resources, and lack of an urgent medical facility. There are three more on the next slide. And on the top is the key, with number one being the priority in blue and number seven being in paint. So the one thing that should jump out to all of you is that wildfire risk is still your number-one concern here. Diminishing water resources, we would probably say also is a concern for you. The other two, not sure. On this slide, we have not enough well-paying jobs on the left, lack of a recreation center on the right, and heavy traffic on 285. We all know that 285 has always been a concern, but in this survey, you weren't so concerned about well-paying jobs or lack of a recreation center. This summarizes those seven categories, and again, wildfire risk, water resources, medical facility, and probably the traffic on 285 were your major concerns. The next three slides are just some additional findings, and I'll just touch on some key points. So when asked, what made you decide to come to Conifer? Conifer, you gave us, you know, four reasons at the top. Those are the same as you gave in 2018, but most of you said you liked the small town and the rural character. I asterisked the second bullet over here on childcare. In 2018, you said 9% of you said that you could find affordable and available childcare. This year, that's down 5%. When we get done with this presentation, we're going to take this information and going to present it to a lot of organizations, and I think we're going to foot-stomp that and see if we can do something about that. The top three businesses that you desired, no change from 2018, restaurants, a car wash, and a bakery. I've only lived up here 10 years, but when I saw movie theater, I said, "What?" Surely reminded me that a long time ago, you guys had a movie theater and it was packed all the time, so now I understand it. The second bullet is the services that you said you needed, and again, those four items up there were the top four, no change from 2018. Traffic safety, again, has always been a key concern of the folks in Conifer, and 450 of you said that we need two lanes from Richmond Hill to Bailey. On the recreation bullet, you always, a lot of you said that we need a lot of community facilities, and when asked if you would support the creation of Parks and Rep District, 50% of you said that you would, down slightly from the 2018 survey. So what did we learn? We've already talked about the library, so I'm going to fly through that, but the library actually took your comments, and in January, they started putting together the presentations that they would consider in August. You know, they voted to grant a freestanding library, but again, these next three slides just tell you that they took what you said, and you know, your opinions matter and your voice was heard. They actually included some of the comments, so good on you for the people that took the survey and gave your input. What else did we learn? The second item up there was, in previous surveys, you said that you would like to have a connector between Flying Jay and Myers Ranch. We've worked with Jeffco Open Space a lot over the last year, and they assure us that that's going to happen. They're working with homeowners to, you know, to de-conflict, you know, right-of-way's and easements and things like that, but they're working hard to bring that as soon as they Trails, trail safety, trail connections, and safety on our paths has also been a key concern of yours, and I think you know the Conifer Area Council has a trails subcommittee, and we are actively working to break those trails and that safety to you. And finally, my last slide, what will we do with this? 2,000 comments is a lot to go through, 100 pages. We're going to pare this down, and we're going to give this presentation to a number of organizations and anybody else that asks. We're going to push your information out there as far as we can internally on the CAC. This will drive a lot of what we focus on for the next year. Thanks, and remember, winter's right around the corner.
Thank you, Kurt. So that ends our presentations tonight. I want to thank Core Electric Cooperative again, and RE/MAX Alliance for their support of tonight's meeting. Be watching for our email that goes out with this meeting on tape. And our next Town Hall will be Wednesday, November 15th, so we hope to see you all here, and bring your neighbors. We need more people here, so, because I know we have a lot of great information here. So thank you all so much for coming, and we'll see you in November. Thank you.